The University of Antelope Valley's Paramed...
The pathogen is endemic, so we also causing problems for people who visit our area unintentionally. And none of these are probably educated about it, which also has problems. I don't wanna go into too much depth, but the doctors at the east coast, they probably don't know much about valley fever and probably misdiagnosed and mistreat those patients. Okay, so how do we actually turn around? How can we actually do dust mitigation? And there is already something done. So in environmental impact reports, for example, developers, they have to make sure that workers are not exposed to a lot of dust. So there's watering going on when soil is transported from one area to the other. A tarp had to be over the truck and so on. The workers have to be educated that they know that they're in danger of contracting valley fever. So when they have symptoms, they should ask the physician to do a valley fever test and so on. So companies are already making some progress in in education. But we have to go beyond that to actually make a difference. So actually, overall, we should try to work against soil disturbance. So wherever a natural area is around, we should not disturb the natural area. So when we wanna put more solar ranches in place, it would be better to to consider areas that are already disturbed to a degree that is probably beyond repair. And then one other thing that many people don't know is that when we actually do like off-road biking and all this, we actually destroy the natural vegetation, including microorganisms that keep the soil from eroding. So it's like maybe you have heard about desert varnish and biological soil crusts. So the first layer of the soil is pretty hard and pretty dry and like concrete and microbes. Some, these are symbiosis between fungi and photosynthetic microbes, they hold the soil together. But it's very fragile, so when you walk over it, when you drive over it, you destroy that. And we see this even in areas that look nice, the tortoise desert habitat, you know, when you go in there, you see all the off-road traffic there destroying those vulnerable biological soil crusts, which take decades to actually regrow. It's pretty sad to see that. And then also sustainable farming. You might know that some people who are in the farming business, they're pulverized soil, so that the carrots are growing straight. I'm not sure if this is being done in the Lancaster area, but it's being done in the Bakersfield area. And pulverized soil, of course, is a very bad dust hazard. So this should not be allowed. So farmers should also be responsible. Yeah. And then, of course, we have to educate the public about health risks. So people in the Lancaster area, as an underserved area, are not that well educated. They're only like sixteen or seventeen percent that actually get a bachelor's degree. The rest is probably not, maybe has a high school degree or not even that. And then people should consider maybe biocontrol methods to actually add to the dust mitigation program that they already pursue. So we wanna talk about this. And biocontrol is nothing new. I actually saw in the news, this year is the first international biocontrol symposium in India. It's an international symposium, the first one. But biocontrol is nothing new. Biocontrol is using probiotics and prebiotics and is leaving out pesticides that can actually harm eukaryotes, us humans.
Is there gonna be an exam after this, doctor?
Yeah, I can ask you.
No.
Is this too much? I want that you learn.
I know this is your expertise, but.
Okay, thank you. I will go on to my biocontrol method. But I wanna make sure that you understand that I'm not presenting something here that I came up with. That's not true. This is something that is already going on in a lot of environments and probably also in the Lancaster area. So what is established is that biocontrol is being used to fight plant pathogenic fungi. But it has never been used to actually inhibit human pathogenic fungi, like the valley fever fungus. But why not trying that? You know, this is actually a good thing. So you could actually purchase something that is already available. And you can buy these kind of things which are referred from Dr. Earth, maybe at Home Depot. If you wanna do that in your yard, it has a list of microbes that are able to inhibit plant pathogens. Okay, so how do I propose a biocontrol method? So first of all, you have to be careful when you wanna apply something, you bring microorganisms from one area in another one, you have to make sure that it is safe. Then also, is it possible or is it kind of a waste of money? Is it a short-term or long-term solution? And all these questions here, does it really protect us? Yeah. And how does it affect the natural microbes that are in the soil? Maybe there is a dangerous effect to it. And I can come up with a detailed biocontrol plan, so how to do it? You know, this is a plan that I came up with. And based on this plan that required a microbe that is anti the valley fever fungus, we isolated it from an area in Bakersfield. It was strongly anti-coxioidis and we tested it in the field, in a small experiment, using this kind of project plan. So also the methods that we're using at CSUB are not kind of old-fashioned. We are relying on molecular tools. So I'm not exposing my students to inhale valley fever spores, so we're not trying to isolate the pathogen at CSUB. We work with methods that indirectly detected. We detected by finding its DNA. So we extract DNA from the soils and then we find it. So this is what this method is about. And these methods also allow us to get fingerprints of, let's say, the overall fungal community in a soil. And how it is affected if we add an enter fungal agent to it, we can do that too. And there are some details about a pilot project that I did in the Bakersfield area. So let's have a look at that. And I wanna present some results. So this is close to the Buena Vista Lake Bed, southwest of Bakersfield. There are a lot of agricultural fields around here, it's Interstate five. This is my little plot, which is a former agricultural field that is not under management for more than ten years. So it's kind of not natural, but it is a disturbed area with a mix of native and invasive species of plants. So what I did was, I looked at environmental parameters to characterize it, looking at pH and clay just to see if my area that I wanna test is uniform or is kind of very different in regard to environmental parameters. So my plot is like here in the middle, so most of it is kind of green, saying it has a clay percentage of twenty-three to twenty-five. And the pH is a little elevated, being like around eight point one. Okay, so this is how my site looks like. And you can see it's pretty similar to a disturbed site in the Lancaster area. So you see invasive grasses like bromo species, a lot of empty places that are dust hazards. And I tested a variety of different spots, just walking over it randomly gathering some samples and then investigated based on my DNA methods where the valley fever fungus occurred. And it was spottily distributed, all the red spots were positive or the yellow spots were negative. So I used this site as one field site because I had negative sites there and positive sites, right, in one site. So this is a picture of a result that proved to me which sites were positive. So they were all called X. And then this band indicates there were fungi there and this other band indicates that there is the valley fever fungus there. This is called diagnostic PCR. So you can determine the presence of the pathogen by using DNA fingerprinting or probes like this. So this is also nothing new. This was already invented in the nineteen eighties and applied in the nineteen nineties. So every biologist knows these kind of things. Yeah, every scientist has run into these kind of methods sooner or later. Everybody uses those. And then we can have a look what actually, we can cultivate from those soils. So when I say there were valley fever negative sites, so maybe these sites were negative because there are some enemies of the valley fever fungus, the other microbes, like other fungi or other bacteria inhibited, like a probiotic. Yeah. So I can isolate some of them and these are just examples. So when you take a little bit of soil, put some water in it, make a slurry and put a drop on a petri plate that has some nutrients in it, you can let them grow. And then you can see that some fungi inhibit other fungi. Or here's a big bacterial colony that inhibits this kind of white fungus. There's another one that inhibits this fungus. So you can isolate those bacterial colonies that already show some ability to be enter fungal and test them against the valley fever fungus. The valley fever fungus is not easy to be isolated because it easily gets outcompeted on the plate. So we never got it growing on the plates. It's a little wimpy and that has a reason. Most of the fungi are actually able to biodegrade plant-derived matter, but the valley fever fungus loves animal-derived matter. This is also why it's so highly abundant in areas where there are a lot of rodents. It easily gets outcompeted when there's an area where there's not enough animal-derived matter, a lot of plant-derived matter, and then there are other fungi that take over. So we isolate microbes that have a potential to be also anti-coxioidis, that's the genus name of the valley fever fungus. And then we can test them. So this is called a challenge assay. So we have the valley fever fungus in the middle and we have one bacterial species here and one bacterial species there. And you see that the fungus is growing away from this species. So this one is anti-coxioidis, anti the valley fever fungus. And you can do that with other environmental fungi too, to see if the bacterium that is anti-valley fever might not be anti all other fungi in the soil, you see. And from all our isolates that we actually got, there were twenty-five out of ninety that were anti the valley fever fungus and there were others that weren't. So that was my my first results of this pilot study. I characterized all the bacteria that are isolated that look like promising and this is just a phylogenetic tree how they are related. So overall, to cut it short, we found streptomycyge species and bacillus species that were anti-valley fever fungus. So these could be probiotics, these could be biocontrol agents. And then we actually got them to work. We actually used the plot that I showed you before and I got some students involved. And we randomly chose some sites among those positive and negative ones. And then we wanted to apply a biocontrol approach, like it is really being done. So when you do that, you have to mix the cells that are enter fungal with water and spray them. And of course, you need to have a little help from nature because we get little rain here in the Bakersfield and the Lancaster area. So you better do that when rain is being announced. So you spray and then the rain is penetrating them deeper into the soil. If you do that and there is no rain, they will just be on the surface. So this, and they are not penetrating deeper down, but the valley fever fungus might grow deeper down in the soil. So if you wanna inhibit it, you need to make sure that your anti-coxi species are also getting a little deeper into the soil. Yeah, if they're just lingering at the surface, that's not really helping. So we did this and we sprayed actually twice. We had also some negative sites because we wanted to see if spraying our antagonist, an antagonist is one that is anti something, yeah, has some negative impacts on the environment, yeah, so we did this too. We treated the sites with one to three million, million cells per milliliter twice a year. And then actually, we did this during the rainy season. And then we re-sampled over the next couple months and analyzed what happened. So this is just a slide that shows you how we can actually harvest the bacillus species. It's actually done with centrifugation and growth media, not difficult. I show you this before. This is just a fingerprint of the diversity of fungi over time. So you have, for example, here, we have the valley fever fungus with a close relative. Each band is one species, so the valley fever fungus is the band over here. And you see, for example, here, there's a band appearing in the lower area of the jails, so this is the valley fever fungus. Yeah. So over time, these were two sites that were treated. The left one actually was one that was treated with our bacillus subtilis. And this one was treated just with water. And I put this out here to just show you actually what happens if you treat a site just with water. And that actually caused the valley fever fungus to grow. And I know this is one of the dust mitigation methods that's being applied, just water. And if this is already a valley fever site, you actually trigger a little rainy season and give them a jump start, actually, which is not good. And when the workers are then leaving, they have actually generated a hazard. And they don't know, but they don't care much because they are moving on. Okay, this is just a quick summary of some of our results from the pilot project. So we had here, six different sites are listed. The treatment is listed over here. And then before spraying, three negative sites and before spraying, three positive sites and what turned out. So a negative site that was sprayed with our antagonist stayed negative after four months, it was still negative. We had a negative site that was sprayed with saline that actually became positive. And we had a positive site that was positive and then negative and then positive again. We had one that was treated with water a little bit, that was positive, negative and positive. And then we had no treatment which stayed positive. So these were not all the sites that we tested, but these were all the ones that I could evaluate with the help of my students and that limited budget that I had. We actually couldn't finish all the, all the analysis because we ran out of money. And this was funded by just by CSUB and some student support. So it was difficult to get everything done. But it shows that the bacillus subtilis was able to keep at least a negative side negative and actually it might have had an impact on some of the positive sites. Okay. So if we were to do something like this in the Lancaster area, so we first would have to find a suitable field site because you can find antagonists in the laboratory that might show enter fungal activity, but you have to test it in the field to see if they're really able to maintain their anti-coxi abilities when there are other microbes present because they might not do it. So when you read the literature, it's always, you do a laboratory experiment and then you do some kind of greenhouse experiment and then you do a real field experiment, just to be on the safe side. You don't wanna generate a hazard with your microbes that you isolated. But we always work with microbes that are actually coming from the original site. So it's not that we introduce something completely new to a site, we just enhance its quantity. So we make more of them that are already there. So, okay, so I have a timeline. If I would do something like that, this is what I would do. I've learned from the pilot project, so some pitfalls, of course, there. I learned from working with students and how to do it better. But if we would do it, I would propose to do it thoroughly over a three, at least two-year period, maybe three. So in the first year, we would actually isolate some anti-valley fever isolates. So we already have some available in Bakersfield, but they're from Bakersfield soils, not from Lancaster soils. Would be best to have some from the field sites. And then we can also test some commercially available products that are already on the market if they are suitable to actually treat areas that are under construction or for farmers that wanna convert a natural area into an agricultural field. Maybe it's good if they use some of these products. I would like to isolate them, do challenge assays with them to see if on a plate they perform good against the valley fever fungus. And then do a like little field experiment in a greenhouse, like in a controlled environment when none of these species can escape. And then I would analyze my first results, do a first report. And then I would think about a field experiment. So we would identify one or two field sites in the Lancaster area, maybe some that are supposed to get developed in the near future. Some eroded sites would be good. Areas west of Antelope Acres are already positive for the pathogen. We investigated some of the areas there. There's also one paper published where you can see where I found it. And then we would do this field experiment similar to the area that I did in in my Bakersfield area. We would analyze the results and then we have to run, probably fill some gaps, do some repetitions. Because if you wanna have a solid research product put together, you have to rely on statistical analysis. You have to apply statistics, otherwise you can't really prove that what you find is true. And the statistics reply and replicate. So you probably have to do the things three times over. And then you run your statistics and there's even, there might be a good effect or there might be no effect or there might be a negative effect. Yeah. So I'm pretty optimistic that there's a positive effect because my my field study in Bakersfield had some positive effects there. Yeah. And then maybe we could consider if there should be a product developed or we can use one that is already on the market and in which areas it would be meaningful. Yeah, I saw there, driving here to Lancaster, I saw some dust mitigation project areas already declared. I don't know what plans the city has with these areas, but they're actually a dust hazard right now when you drive by. You probably know what I'm talking about, right? And ultimately, yeah, I could give some recommendations what to do based on the results and put a final report together for you and then you can decide what to do with it. Yeah. So that's what what you can do. The alternative would be, yeah, I don't know. Probably stay with the same problem and have no solution because the problem will not go away. And then you can ask me a lot of questions, if you want.
If I discern correctly, the problem is here no matter what. It's, it's been in our environment since the beginning of time or since biologists like yourself have made evaluations of.
Yeah. So when I do, yeah, when I do an evaluation, you can look at this. Actually, I evaluated it already, trying to think about if it's meaningful. What I can say from my experience with the valley fever fungus, because it's here since the last ice age, like more than ten thousand years ago or even longer than that, it will never completely go away. But we will be able to maybe reduce the numbers of airborne spores by a biocontrol method or by better education.
So if your, if your process of experiments and the results are as you anticipate, have you factored any potential cost of likely treatment?
Cost of treatment? You know, the cost of treatment actually has to be paid by the developer because they are generating the problem.
That may well be. I'm just trying to factor in the, the cost impact, net cost impact.
That depends.
To solve a problem that's always been here and will not go away.
Well, it will not go away, but the hazard can be reduced, that's the point. It will never go completely away, but it will be reduced. So there will be less patients that develop valley fever.
So the, so the paper I read that was provided to us talked about the impact of, of cases, reported cases of, what is it, eight per one hundred thousand in the county? Is that accurate?
It's actually for, well, you have to look, it's kind of a little misleading when you look at the entire LA county because that takes the urban LA area into account. You should really look into the Lancaster area.
But it's, it's not broken down into the areas that are, have a higher risk, if you will.
No, it is. You can look at the county's health reports and it states that the service planning area.
Yeah, but that's not the information was provided to us. I'm only talking about what was given to us.
Oh, I don't know. I can, if you wanna have this information, it's publicly available and it's, that's for two thousand seventeen, there were sixty-two cases. And in two thousand sixteen, there were like fifty-eight.
So you have potential sites identified that you can experiment with. You've come up with a protocol of your experiments and you have a potential budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do it.
Yeah, I could.
And now you need a resource. Who besides the city of Lancaster have you engaged anyone?
Well, CSUB is usually engaged in this. And then I can apply for the, for money that is supported by Sacramento.
How about CDC? Are they giving out grants for your type of work?
Well, CDC gives me letters of recommendation when I apply for proposals for money, but they don't have money themselves.
You need a sponsor then.
Yeah, I need a sponsor. So we had, in the past, I had sponsors from the Department of Defense. I had sponsors from NASA. And I got sponsors from the Bureau of Land Management. So these were my sponsors in the past. And, yeah, student support I had from CSUB.
Well, I can think of a number of potential sponsors, just looking around this room.
Yeah, I hope so. Well.
So if you need seed money, you know, we don't have, this commission does not have discretionary power over the city's budget. But if we did, we might suggest a sum for seed money. And then we might suggest that the County of Los Angeles would match that. And then other folks that tend to disturb the soil, who have projects in our community, also might wanna participate if we ask them politely. And, you know, before you know it, we might come up with sufficient funds to promote your experiments.
Yeah, that would be great.
However.
Yeah.
Some of, some of the things you said I didn't follow very well.
Just ask. I'm here to answer.
Well, those Jesuits barely got me through high school biology, okay? I was very fortunate to make it. So a lot of what you're talking about is way up here. Now, other members are much more qualified than I to speak on environmental issues and particularly those sciences, even though he promised he wasn't gonna speak for two meetings. Mr. Paris, I know you have questions.
You know, one thing that I might wanna add, you know, this biocontrol project is part of a solution, but it's not the only solution. What also has to come forward is like areas have to be revegetated to actually really keep the dust down. And that's not happening. When you look at many of those new solar ranches, they actually have the soils graded and they should stay graded because any plant that might grow there might shade the solar panels. That's what I was told by they sometimes. Don't even let non-native grass come back, which is actually a fire hazard when they let the bromo species come back. They burn really quickly. So if there's a fire here in Lancaster, that burns really quickly down all the solar ranches here when you have the invasive bromo species growing there. So if you try to get native species back to grow in some areas, that's against wildfire. It's good for insects, it's good for wildlife and it also keeps the dust down. But this is also a cost because you can just put the seeds there. You need to wait until the plants get established and that is a cost factor. But maybe it's a good long-term investment. Yeah. That's in addition to what I propose here. What I learned also by being here and sampling and when I'm here like two o'clock or earlier, the wind always kicks in. So we usually come sampling earlier so that we don't expose ourselves to the wind. But that's the time when the schoolchildren are getting dropped off by the bus and they walk home. They get exposed to the wind every day. There even solar ranches right beside little schools where the dust blows over the graded air right into the recess, recess area. You know, this is kind of not good long-term solution. It's great to have the solar ranches there, I'm pro, but we have to make sure that we don't expose vulnerable people of our community to this awful disease. Because if you ever saw people who came down with valley fever and these cases that you talk about, these are the reported cases. People who don't have health insurance, they might actually never report it. And it might be one of the underlying causes of death. They might officially then die of something else, but they also had valley fever. I always have students in my class that tell me things about valley fever. Like they had even valley fever as a child and are now healthy, but they're never gaining any weight. So that indicates that they still have the valley fever fungus in them. Yeah, so there are a lot of, you could talk to physicians about these kind of things. It's kind of scary. I don't wanna get this disease and it's really, really sad to see some people struggle with this for years. And also animals, people abandon their animals, give them to shelters because they can't afford the bills to treat the animals, hundreds of dollars or even thousands of dollars sometimes. It's, it's kind of an awful disease. Yeah. And we can do something, yeah, to reduce actually the risk at least.
Well, doing something is important, I suppose, particularly from someone in your profession, but outcomes are what I would be concerned about. Anticipated outcome.
Yeah, and we don't wanna waste any money. We don't wanna do that. We don't wanna waste taxpayers' money. But what I did so far is kind of a promising result, that's what I can say. But it's not the only solution. Other things have to happen too, which is common sense.
You've seen the revised, excuse me, you've seen the conditions that we are now imposing on development relative to site development, dust control, those types of things. Actually, I think you were part of preparing those recommendations. And then we are now imposing on all projects where there's ground disturbance. So we are doing something.
Yeah.
It's not like we're doing nothing, obviously. So the, the spores, if I understood you correctly, assuming they're there, which they are, but not easily identifiable where they may be, you suspect where they are. But until you actually do the sampling and, and prepare your experiment, you don't really know.
No.
That, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and we know that fungus, fungi is what, as you call it, I'll call it fungus, grows with moisture typically and heat, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the natural occurrence of rain, which we don't get much of here and neither does Bakersfield area or most of the southwest, will trigger that. But there's other fungus in the soil, another microbe. Do we know their risk?
The valley fever fungus is not posing a risk to them.
No, no, do we know what those?
Oh, well, the only, there is no other human fungal pathogen here in the area. There is on the east coast, we have histoplasmosis and blastermycosis. We don't really have these kind of pathogens here. There are also like soil organisms that can become airborne. But the only fungus that causes a problem here in our area is the valley fever fungus. And then in some areas, there might be Aspergillus fumigatus, but it's not as common as the valley fever fungus. So it's the valley fever fungus is the number one fungus that is causing a problem. In regard to bacteria that are in the soil, there might be Bacillus anthracis, member entrax, that might be there. But I'm not putting Bacillus anthracis in soil, even if I find it to be anti-coxi. I'm not doing that. So my, so the species that I identified as being anti- So my, so the species that I identified as being anticoxy, they are all sequenced, so I know what they are. Yeah, so I know the species names, so I can look up if they are harmless species or if they are potential plant pathogens, so I can look that all up. And they were all harmless. We call them soil subroutines, so they just simply biodegrade dead organic matter. And every microbe in the soil tries to defend its space. And some are more successful against other bacteria, some are successful against other fungi, some are only successful when they grow together with other fungi against a third party. So it's a very complex environment. And the valley fever fungus is able to grow at warmer temperatures. There are actually papers from the nineteen sixties that already figured that out. The valley fever fungus is one of the fungi that can actually easily grow at forty degrees or even more. And many other fungi don't really like that. And fungi are spore formers. So when they don't like the environment, they simply make a spore and then they wait until the environment becomes better. And our antagonists that we chose are spore formers too. So even if our, let's say, application is not receiving enough rain in year one, they just make a spore then and they might then be there ready for the next rainy season. So the basilospecies and streptomycy species that I suggested that worked in the Bakersfield area, they're spore formers too. And our soils are rich in spore formers, which makes sense, because microorganisms that wanna be successful in desert soils, they better should be able to make spores, that they don't die when there's too much UV radiation, too much heat, if there's no moisture, you know, they survive in these kind of form.
The, the area in that, where you did your experiments in southwest Bakersfield, that's between the ninety-nine and the five. And it's, it appears, at least from the photographs, or what I could determine, is on what I would call alkali land that had sufficient amount of moisture, standing water, over a period of time in the past. Would that be accurate?
In the spring, you, you see that in the Lancaster area too, when it's clay rich soil, there's some puddles standing there. And the soil is very soft. And when these areas, when the water evaporates, you have a like salty crust, you sometimes see that. You have salt bushes growing in some of those areas. And these are indicators of potential habitats for the valley fever fungus. But there are also some areas here in the Lancaster area where you don't see the salt bushes anymore, because this was, is all ranchland, it had been burned away. But the soil conditions are still supporting the valley fever fungus. So it's hard to see when you visit the site if this might be a valley fever site, a potential valley fever site. But you can look at the data from the USDA Department of Agriculture to see if this is an alkaline soil, like at least on average. Or is this a soil where you can assume the pH is a little bit higher or the electrical conductivity is higher, so meaning there's a lot of salt. So these are indicators that, that this site is hostile for a lot of other microbes. So it might be good for the valley fever fungus to be there, especially when they are rodents. So this is how I find my positive sites. And you develop a little ability to find positive sites. So I'm more successful in finding positive sites than I was when I started. So when I have several parameters together, I always say that this is, it's worth to sample here. And then often then I know I'm successful, I find it there. But also sometimes it's negative. But when it's negative, it's usually because there is another microbe already established that inhibits it. So from all the parameters that you can actually gather, I think the microbial parameters are the most important. If there is a suitable environment that could theoretically support the valley fever fungus, but another species is already established, that is anticoxy, the valley fever fungus has problems.
All right, there may be more questions.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the time out of your day to educate us a little bit more on, or put us in fear of valley fever. We had been briefed a couple of, maybe three months ago, by another organization. And there was an assertion that had you either lived in this area thirty to forty years or born and raised in this area, that you perhaps were already carrying in your system valley fever. Is there any truth to that scientifically speaking?
Yeah, let me say something about this. This kind of study is based back to the nineteen thirties when they did a study on schoolchildren and cattle. And the, it's true, they investigated children when they started elementary school and then ten years later, and they found that thirty percent of those kids that were negative in year one, and ten years later, they were thirty percent positive. So they assumed that if you live in the endemic area of the pathogen, in ten years, thirty percent of the population can become immune. They gathered it already. But that was done on, on children and later it was done on, on some mammals, including cattle. But I would say we should be careful extrapolating this to, to our times, because in the past, kids spent time outside only. They played outside the whole day. They went home from school and then they played outside. And now, look at your kids, probably sitting at home playing computer games. There's really barely children who go outside riding their bikes, skating, or playing games outside, kids are inside. So they're not that often outside. But it's true that a lot of, a lot of people, including kids, contracted the disease and their immune system is able to fight it. So your immune system is usually in a good shape, you're healthy and can fight all kinds of pathogens, not just the valley fever fungus, also some streptococci, like strep throat, some viruses that you get exposed to, that you don't even know that you got exposed to. You just immune system battles it. But we also have more and more vulnerable members of our community. People that have asthma, people that have diabetes, people that are obese. We have a high amount of African Americans in our environment here. And they are more vulnerable to come down with the disseminated form of, of valley fever. So everybody can get valley fever, but darker colored skin, like people who have, who come from, originally from Africa, if ancestors from Africa or from Philippines or from Mexico have darker skin, they seem to be not that well adapted to, to fight against fungal pathogens. And the immunologists, they try to figure out why that is. So they try to figure out which genes code for which players of the immune system and which genes are not expressed in those people that have the disseminated form of the disease, which means the valley fever fungus has spread throughout the body. This is what disseminated or systemic disease means. So when you look at the statistics, it's always the darker colored people who come down with the horrible forms of the disease. Not so much the light colored ones, it's the darker colored ones. And that's kinda sad too. And then a lot of immune compromise, people with HIV, people who have drug problems. We have the people here in the prisons, you know, you probably have heard that they are over-percentually involved with valley fever cases, like, they are just more vulnerable. And I think the study that you are getting immune when you live here for a certain amount of time is true, but it's not as true as it was like seventy years ago. Yeah?
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
And we have a lot of people moving here from another environment that are already older. And the older you are-
Well, you know, some of the diseases they carry with them also infect us, don't they?
Which disease?
Yes, they do.
Neasils, when they're not vaccinated.
Like tuberculosis, for instance, or- And what's the latest one that's now being, oh, typhus.
Typhus, okay. Okay, but this is really-
That's bacterial, that's not viral.
Rickettsia species, bacteria, yeah. They come with, with rats and, and fleas.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, then you have a rodent problem.
So I suppose if, if no one ever, ever from now and forever forward, ever walks on vacant land, touches it in any way, and no development ever takes place, will still be subject to the risk of valley fever. So, it's mitigation that we're talking about. So if, so if the city of Lancaster takes the lead and assists you in some way to gather enough money to do your experiment, do we get first listing on the sponsor?
Of course.
Now, you know, there's, there's a couple of congressmen in, in your district and our district. Leader McCarthy, who's been at least publicly supported of-
I also got a letter of recommendation from him once.
Right. Those are wonderful, but we need money, right?
I know. Yeah, people are quick with saying, right?
So there may be discretionary funds that are available from our legislative folks. So that's five, actually six, two state senators, two assembly members, and two congressmen, right? And you have the County of Los Angeles and the City of Lancaster, and the County of Kern. How many is that? Thirteen?
It's enough, yeah, it's enough. But the thing is also-
At what, twenty thousand dollars apiece? You got your funding, right?
Yeah.
Now, the city manager is sitting in the audience, or he was, he probably left when he heard money. Oh, he is paying attention, Sid. So if, so maybe after we, after your presentation, and, and I know you're about finished, and, and we appreciate you being here certainly, maybe there's an opportunity from the city level to start the seed money going and maybe help facilitate bringing others into the, under the big tent, if you will.
Yeah, it's, it's always easy-
It's probably not a good term for a conservative to say, but I will say it.
You know, once you show that it's possible, you know, then probably more money will support it, but you just have to start it. Yeah, that's, that's good, I appreciate it.
Well, I'm more intere-, you know, it sounds like you, your experiments have worked in the past and it sounds like you're able to, to do the isolations and likely come up with a soil treatment that would help stabilize the soil and prevent, and lower the risk. You're never gonna prevent it, but you can lower it.
Yes.
Which then may turn into an appropriate additional mitigation for cities like us and counties to implement. And that's really what we're talking about, right? Okay. All right, any other, so before I let you go, any other comments, questions? All right, well, thank you again.
Okay.
We really appreciate it.
And if you have more questions, you can email me. Yeah, thank you.
No doubt we will. Thank you very much. Okay, we're back on our agenda, item number two, which is a continued public hearing. So the, the hearing is open on General Plan Amendment Number eighteen oh three, Zone Change eighteen oh three, and Conditional Use Permit eighteen oh five. Do we have speakers on this matter?
There are no speakers on this item.
No speakers?
No speakers.
Okay. We have a revised staff report and recommendation that we received today. Ms. Swain, enlighten us.
Chair- Chairman Voss and Commissioners, Tradecraft Ventures and Kalendry Properties submitted applications for a Conditional Use Permit, General Plan Amendment and Zone Change for four three five one one Seventieth Street East in order to allow for the development of a medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility. On September seventeenth, the Planning Commission heard the proposed project and had concerns regarding the existing building's compliance with the ADC Architectural and Design Guidelines. As such, the hearing was continued to October fifteenth in order to allow the applicant to address these matters. The applicant has agreed to further enhance the site design and construct a perimeter wall that will be complimentary and well-designed. The wall will feature a combination block wall with a smooth finish and split face accents. The primary building will remain as originally proposed without any additional enhancements as it is in an existing structure. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution eighteen thirty approving Conditional Use Permit eighteen oh five and recommending to the City Council approval of General Plan Amendment Number eighteen oh three and Zone Change Number eighteen oh three. All other items with respect to the proposed proj-, project remain unchanged. You're welcome.
Thank you.
And it's hard to hear, see from here, but this is the actual-
Yeah, and we have a handout on that, thank you. Just for the record, we have not received an uncontested letter on this project or Items three and four.
That is correct. Oh, I take that back. You didn't receive an uncontested hearing letter on this item.
We did not? I don't have one.
No, we did not receive it on this item.
Okay, so is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
All righty. Mr. Kalendry, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Voss. I just wanted to show up tonight, let you know that we did take your recommendation serious. We enlisted the help of a local valley mason that's been a masonry here for over twenty-five years, as well as we went to Bill's Landscaping, who did most of the landscaping projects in the Lancaster Business Park. Quite an additional amount of cost was spent on this. As it stands, the block wall that we're doing is not just your ordinary block wall, split face block wall. It's gonna have some very nice curb appeal to it. And this block wall's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars. In addition to that, we're putting almost eighty-five thousand square feet of landscaping in the facility now. If you figure an average rule of thumb of somewhere between four and five dollars a square foot, you're talking a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So, since our last meeting, we've done a million dollars worth of proposed additional upgrades to this project. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Maybe some.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from anyone? Nope, all right, thank you. From staff? Anything further?
There's nothing further to add on this item.
Say again?
There's nothing further to add on the item.
All right, thank you very much. So without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number eighteen dash thirty approving Conditional Use Permit Number eighteen dash zero five to allow for the construction and operation of a one hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one square foot medical cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and recommending approval of General Plan Amendment Number eighteen dash zero three and Zone Change Number eighteen dash zero three to the City Council.
Thank you. Have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote. No, hang on, it's not ready. Now it is.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. Good luck. Next item. New public hearing on Conditional Use Permit eighteen oh two. So without objection, that public hearing is open. All right, we didn't res-, we did, I'm sorry. We did receive a uncontested letter on this item. Do we have speakers on this item?
There are no speakers on this item.
All right. Anyone care to hear the staff report on this? I think the heater's on. Turn it off. Good lord. Put on a sweater. Put some woolly socks on. Is the heater on? Yeah, it's on.
It's just burning off the dust.
It's the first heater of the, of the season in your house, you know? The dust is burning. Let's hope it doesn't include- whatever those spores are called. Because Mark will be leaving the room if there's any chance of a disease. Oh goodness, okay. So, we don't have any speakers on this. Anyone care to hear the staff report on this? Nope? All right, weigh the staff report and close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I motion to adopt Resolution eighteen thirty-four approving Conditional Use Permit Number eighteen twenty to allow for virtual gaming facility in existing tenant space, Pilme-, Pilmaro, in the Boulevard District of Downtown Lancaster, specific plan, SP zero eight dash zero one zoning designation.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote then. Thank you. All right, next item is item number four. It's a new public hearing on a time extension for tentative tract map number seven two eight seven five and conditional use permit number one four dash zero eight. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
There are no speaker cards on this item.
All right. Anyone care to hear the staff report on this last extension? If I have that right, Ms. McGunia? All right? No? Nope? All right, then we'll close the public hearing without objection, consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number eighteen dash thirty-five granting a one-year extension to September twenty-second, twenty nineteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions list attachment to resolution number fourteen dash thirteen.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All right, item number five, before we have to take our jackets off and... Holy Toledo. Okay, I know you ladies are all happy with this heater being on. I know ladies rule the world, so I'm not going to say anymore. Isn't that right, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
That is correct. That is correct.
All right. Ms. Swain is going to give us a brief update on likely new regulations as it affects SEQA that ought to be adopted pretty soon.
That is correct.
Why don't you, why don't you bring us up to date, please?
Okay. So in two thousand and thirteen, S B seven forty-three was signed into law, and among many things, it required the SEQA guidelines to be updated to incorporate some changes with respect to how traffic is analyzed for significance, with significant impacts. In two thousand and thirteen, the update process to the SEQA guidelines was started to implement S B seven forty-three, among other laws that continue to be passed over time. Public review versions of the updated draft guidelines were released in both two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen. Substantial comments were submitted back to the state. There were some public meetings held where more comments could be given. And then nothing really happened between the middle end of two thousand and sixteen until the end of twenty seventeen. And on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, the proposed guideline revisions were submitted to the Natural Resources Agency to start the rulemaking process. And that process started on January twenty-sixth with the notice of the proposed rulemaking. Some minor revisions were made to the updated SEQA guidelines at that point. And then on July third, the California Resources Agency published the fifteen-day language. So those, that revised language, they made some additional tweaks, revisions to the language that was transmitted to them, were then sent out for public review for fifteen days. And it, it's part of their rulemaking process. Any comments or subs, another, more revisions made as a result of these fifteen days are expected to be very minor. I honestly don't see any changes occurring to that, and the new guidelines are expected to be implemented by the beginning of twenty nineteen. What these new guidelines do is incorporate the revisions mandated by S B seven forty-three and A B fifty-two. So S B seven forty-three requires, among many other things, that lead agencies no longer use level of service to determine impacts related to traffic, and they're required to use vehicle miles traveled in order to determine significance. You can still use level of service for informational purposes in an environmental document, but in order to determine your level of significance, vehicle miles traveled will be the standard. This is required to be implemented statewide by July first, twenty twenty. Many of these required changes the cities already started doing when they adopted their complete streets master plan. So you guys have reviewed some of that. Some of the changes required in S B seven forty-three were already incorporated into that revised language. A B fifty-two was already added to the SEQA guidelines in twenty sixteen. This requires lead agencies to notify tribal groups with interest in the area of proposed projects that require an initial study or an E I R and offer them the ability to provide input into tribal sacred resources and to re, ask for consultation with a lead agency and the developer. So that's already been included in all of our initial studies. You'll notice that typically is in the first or second page and then towards the end of the initial study itself. This update also consult, consolidates many of the appendix G questions. So there were seventeen resource areas in the traditional appendix G. Some of them have duplicate questions. So you would have a very similar question asked in biological resources that was asked also in land use. Or there'd be questions regarding airports asked in hazards and in noise. Those questions have been consolidated. A lot of the questions have been reworded for clarity. It also adds two new resource categories to the appendix G checklist. The first one is energy. That's always been required in E I Rs but has not typically been included in initial studies. That's now a requirement. And a new category on wildfires with some additional questions. The other thing that the SEQA guidelines does is provide additional direction and clarity on greenhouse gas analysis, thresholds of significance, and it just expands on basically the city's ability to adopt thresholds. And if you choose to adopt them and deviate from those thresholds, the, the explanation you need to provide as to why you did that. But it also clarifies that you can use a, other agency's standards when you're evaluating significance. So the city can use the air district's daily and yearly thresholds to determine whether or not a proposed project's construction would be significant or not significant. It provides some additional clarity on environmental settings, and it does a number of other cleanup language to address lawsuits, you know, minor wording tweaks and some other things. So you'll probably start to see changes in the initial studies beginning in January or February, but shortly thereafter, adoption of the new guidelines. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Or if you'd like copies of them, I can give you a copy of the, the proposed revisions.
No, I read them. So, so initial studies and mitigated neg decks then will be, will have the imposition of the energy and wildflowers, wildfire segments.
That is correct.
Probably wildflower next, next.
Well, wildflowers would actually be in your biological resources section, but that is correct. They, they have added some language. One minute I can find it for you. A lot of it, I think, got triggered as a result of some of the really intense wildfires that you saw up north, and so now it's being included, but it's asking for, you know-
One size fits all.
Correct. So, you know, the Antelope Valley is subject to wildfires, but not to the same extent that mountainous regions with heavy vegetation would be subject to. So it's asking for questions, you know, substantially impair and adopt an emergency response plan due to slope prevailing wind or other factors exacerbate wildfire risks, require the installation and maintenance of roads, fuel breaks, emergency water sources. So those are the types of questions that are being brought up under the wildfire section of appendix G.
So I have my own opinion, but you read of the proposed regulation modifications relates to litigation. Does it limit the opportunity for litigation on, under SEQA, or does it expand it?
I don't believe it limits the opportunity, but that would be more of an attorney question than, than my question. I think you're still-
So, so someone like Better Neighborhoods, for instance, that brings a suit against a project and then suggests a cash settlement to go away, that won't prevent that?
That won't prevent that, and the standard of review did not change in SEQA documents. So for initial studies of mitigated neg deck, it's still a fair argument standard, and an E I R is still a substantial evidence standard.
All right, thank you. Any questions from here? You could have given this report. All right, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. De La Cruz.
You transitioned beautifully for me. The November, just wanted to give you all an update on the agenda. Tonight's agenda was fairly light. November's agenda, not so much. We do have currently seven items on the agenda, so it could be a little bit lengthier. We will probably give you all some snacks and beverages, given that it's the last meeting. So we'll take care of you that evening. We'll have almonds. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. But the good news is, we don't have a meeting in December, so we'll take the punishment in November for the benefit of not having a meeting in December.
That's correct.
Perfect. Could we extend that to, no, never mind. All right, anything from the members?
I do have a question. What date did we settle on for the special meeting and the public meeting for November? And we talked about a couple of different dates.
Yeah, that would, that would be the, the gender review would be on the nineteenth, and the regular meeting would be on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you all haven't seen YouTube, you should tune in because Vice Chair Smith had an exciting adventure over the weekend.
I did.
Want to tell us about it? Tell those who don't know.
I think I told everyone, I went skydiving. Yeah, so it was really fun. And I survived, that was the first thing Jim, like, are you still with us? I'm still here.
Ah, well, why would anybody jump out of a perfectly good airplane?
Commissioner Ferris also did it once, so, not just me.
Great video, great video. You've done that too, huh?
It was a bad hair day, but I'll take it.
Maybe we could, maybe we should do that as a group. What do you think?
It's a great team building.
Not again?
We can hold hands, we can hold hands.
Oh, you do it again? You do it again, Sandy?
I would do, I would certainly do it, absolutely.
Good, there's three of you. That's a quorum, that's not a quorum, so that leaves us out. All right, anything further? We're done? Okay. So, public business from the floor. There are individuals here, do we have speaker cards or anyone wishing to address us this evening?
There weren't any speaker cards submitted this evening.
Okay, very good. So we stand adjourned until our special meeting for agenda review on Monday, November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at four thirty P M. here in the council chambers. Thank you all.